Ladies and gentlemen, can we stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, hello everybody. We're gonna get going tonight, we've got a full packed meeting ahead. Joe, we have some exemplary people in the audience.
Before we get to the exemplary people, do you want to amend the agenda for...
I think we can just...
Can we do it then?
We can, yeah.
Okay.
We can skip that request.
Alright.
Thank you.
That means that our new teachers get to get out of here a little bit sooner than later. So, as we've been talking about all summer, we've had all these new hires come before the board for approval and they've all gotten approval and I... They are real people, I said in the summer, but I will bring them here to meet you, I swear. So, tonight is at night, so we're really happy to have our new teachers with us. And all I'm gonna ask you to do is, as I call you out, just stand and give a little wave and just let you put a name with a face and what they're gonna be doing for us. So, I'll start up at Massey High School. We have Victoria Cardoso, who's gonna be our new physics science teacher, who is not here.
Good choice, Kevin.
Make her come next time.
I did mean to ask one of you, just to let me know if she's not here, to cross off. So, I don't know if she's not the only one, but...
We broke her already?
We have, still at Massey, teaching history, social studies, Kendra Lee Isaac.
Hello, welcome.
We are very excited to have a Monroe native back with us in special education at Massey, Kelly Malone.
Welcome.
Equally excited to have our former math interventionist at the high school, who's now come back to be a math teacher with us, Jennifer Robb. At Jacque Hollow in special education, Gina Miranda. That new certified math specialist position that we put in the budget last year for the middle school, we're really excited to welcome Nicole Newman. And another Monroe native who's with us this year in grade six, Alyssa Noj. At Fawn Hollow, teaching grade three, our former math interventionist there, Mallory Kindergarten at Fawn Hollow, Sarah Koczanski. Grade one at Jacque Hollow, Kayla O'Sullivan. Fawn Hollow. Special education at Fawn Hollow, Rebecca Witkowski. Grade one, Joanna Viscarondo. Nobody from Monroe, no? Nope, okay, there were no new teachers at Monroe. And finally, at Stepney Elementary School, I don't know if she's here, but our new guidance counselor, Kim Petrofes. And finally, our last, but not least, our speech and language pathologist at Stepney Elementary, Bethany Preston. Bethany, don't sit down.
Walks in to walks out.
So, we're really excited to have them with us. It was great meeting them all during new teacher orientation, and I know they have a continuing orientation series going on throughout the year, they had one this afternoon. But it's great to put, hopefully for all of you folks, a name with a face, and we welcome them, they're very excited to be here. Monroe is a very special place in the sense that folks come here and they tend not to leave, and they spend their entire career here, and when I met with each of them, that was my wish for each of them, is that they spend the rest of their career with us. So, welcome to all of our new teachers, you are more than welcome to stay for the meeting, but you probably want to go home and do that, so please feel free to head out as you wish.
Thank you, and welcome to the district.
Joe, I want to thank you to Bill Ditard and Monroe Sun for highlighting all of this.
Yeah, no, thanks Bill, that was awesome. Bill did a special feature on each one of our new hires, and they came out every day after the new teacher orientation, so thanks a lot, Bill.
Joe, and Dr. Tanner's here tonight as well.
Ah, nice, and we have Dr. Kara Tanner, who is our new elementary English Language Arts Instructional Leader.
Alright, Joe, and as they are seating themselves, getting all eager and ready, we'll move on to the report of the chairman, and we have some new student board representatives, correct?
Yeah, Steve, do you want to introduce our new reps?
Yeah, they could introduce themselves, but I probably shouldn't. So, this is Christopher Yuskas, he's a junior at Massey, and this is Rhea Pusker, sorry, she's also a junior, so they will be alternating after tonight for meetings, and Areek, you know from last year, and Shavani Anand is not here with us tonight, but she will be on most nights.
Okay.
Okay, so Chris and Rhea.
Thank you, welcome. Welcome. Joe, no signups for public participation?
No signups.
Anyone here for public participation? Nope, that's Julia, okay, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Any questions from board members on the minutes from last meeting? No? Any questions on the warrants or wire transfers that were in our packet? Hearing none, moving forward. Any questions on the budget transfers? There was some from athletics. Made sense. No questions. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Dennis, can I have a second? Greg, thank you very much, any further discussion? All in favor? I unanimous, thank you very much. We're gonna move on to the reports of the committees, and we're gonna start with our students. Go right ahead.
Good evening, everyone, I hope you're all having a marvelous Monday. I wanted to begin today's address with a bit more of a serious topic than us student representatives usually cover. I am, of course, referring to the troubling events that occurred at Massey last Thursday morning. Regardless of the reality of whatever danger or lack thereof that was present at our high school that day, I and many others believe that this event highlighted a major oversight within the newly adopted cellphone policy at Massey. During this time of potential crisis last week, the majority of students were not given the opportunity to communicate with their loved ones. That night, Massey students took to social media to publicly voice their grievances with the school's response to the emergency, namely the phone policy. These students expressed their fears that in a dire situation, these newly enacted rules would have prevented them from contacting their families when they needed them the most. I am not here to advocate for the returning of cellphones into our impressionable hands during class time, I recognize the harm that cellphones can cause for our education, nor am I here to disparage the board or Massey administration for this policy initiative, as, in all honesty, I myself recall disregarding similar concerns from classmates when the changes to the school policy were initially brought public this summer. But I realize now that no instance should threat response procedures at schools be made under the guise that it won't happen to us. Massey students have already been informed that Massey administration will be meeting with class officers to discuss the situation, which I am looking forward to, and I'm grateful that our concerns are being heard. But in a perfect world, these conversations would have occurred prior to a real life incident. I am here to ensure that the board is aware of this ongoing issue, and hope that they understand my concerns, or more importantly, our student body's concerns, with how the school's cellphone policy is enforced during emergencies such as the one we experienced last Thursday. As a student representative here for this grade board, I would be remiss if I were to ignore a topic of such heavy importance, and I thank you all for listening.
Thanks, Areek. We're gonna address some of that, but thank you.
Hi, everyone, I'm very excited to be here today, and I'll start by telling you that I think we've had a great start to the school year. Last Friday, we had our first home football game, and it was great to see so many students excited to support our team. We have some amazing Red Army leaders this year, and the crowd brought a lot of school spirit. Our school is also hosting its annual club fair this Friday. We have many new clubs starting this year, and this is a great opportunity for students to discover and explore new interests. Many at Massey's larger clubs, such as Becca and Wingman, have been hard at work for the past few weeks prepping for new incoming members. Student Gov has also started up again. Our juniors have been planning fundraisers and themes for this year's prom, and the freshman classes currently campaigning for their upcoming elections. Thank you.
Hi, everyone, my name is Chris Duskis, I'm the junior class president at Massey. I'm here for our sports work. So, on Friday, we had our first home football game versus Wilton, and Massey won 33 to 26. Next, our next team is on Friday against Enfield. One thing I want to point out about our football games is the great social participation that we've had. We had great performances by the dance team and the Massey cheer team as well. Also, we have some recent wins in boys soccer against Bassey, 3-2, and New Milford, 2-0. This week for boys soccer, we have upkitten games against Paparod, Colby Cathedral, and Harding High School. In girls soccer, we had a recent win against New Milford, 2-1, and tie against NFA, 2-2. And this week, we have games against Paparod and Colby Cathedral. In field hockey, we had a recent win against Lakeview, 3-0. And next up, we have UTEP tonight and Paparod later in the week. In girls volleyball, we have two games this week, Immaculate tonight and UTEP Wednesday. In the boys golf, we have a golf, we have a golfing on Tuesday, home versus Immaculate, Wednesday home versus Westin. And in girls swim, we have a meet on Thursday, a home meet versus Westin. Thank you all for listening.
Hold on one second if you can, I just want to let you know, when we talked about the cellphone policy, it was discussed that if there was an evacuation, a fire drill, something like that, that the teacher would grab the box of phones and go with it. We didn't take it to the next step, as far as a lockdown, a stay put, a shelter in place, and all of that. So, I want to let you know that that day, Joe and I were discussing it, Sheila, we were all discussing like, hey, we have to have a conversation about this. So, that conversation is going to take place with the safety committee, with administrators, we've already had some preliminary conversations with the principal about it, and we acknowledge that, and we're gonna, we're gonna get an answer for you, and hopefully it'll be the best, most logical thing for everybody. But I just want to let you know that that will be rectified, okay?
It's on the task force.
Absolutely, yep, and thanks for your input on that, that's why you're here. Anything else for student reps? No? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any committee reports from board members? Dennis?
Well, CES opened a new school for you today, attended, handles all the grades for our special ed, which is really nice, it's relatively close, it's right in Trump, so it was a good opening, I thought, well attended.
Where is it, Dennis?
Trump.
Okay.
Literally six miles away.
Is it where the CES is now, like near there?
It's across the street.
Oh, okay.
Opened a new facility, yeah.
Thank you. Any other reports from board members? No? Okay, hearing none, we're gonna go to the report of the superintendent. Joe?
Thank you, before I turn it over for any questions for Ron regarding the August fund activity statement, I do want to just take a minute to address the incident that occurred at Massey last Thursday. I wish Areek'd stay for a little bit to hear some of this, but it's alright, I'm sure he'll get the cliff notes, but, you know, first, I want to applaud the students who came forward, even though this rep was deemed to be non-credible, as I mentioned in my email to the district yesterday, you know, we always ask our students to come forward if they see or hear something that could possibly threaten the safety of the school community, and these kids did just that, so I thank them. As for the incident, just to give some context, and this is really kind of a recap of the three emails that I've kind of sent out to the district already, but at approximately 7:20, the administration received a report that a student may have brought a weapon to school. Immediately, our safety protocols were activated, and the school was placed in stay-put status to minimize movement and ensure the safety of students and staff. We immediately contacted, the administration immediately contacted the Monroe Police Department, and I can't thank them enough for how swiftly and professionally they responded to the situation. By the time I arrived at Massey, which was about 7:45 or so, the situation was isolated. Just to address some other issues, when the STEM buses initially arrived, they were redirected to Jacque Hollow, because we were still in kind of an in-between period, weren't sure exactly what was going on yet, where they dropped off the Jacque Hollow students, it was shortly after that that we knew the situation was fully in control, like I said, it was isolated quickly, so we transitioned, it didn't really communicate, but we transitioned to a hybrid stay-put slash controlled movement status. So, this allowed students who were entering the campus to come into the building through the main entrance, where they were supervised by security and the Monroe Police Officers, and directed to the cafeteria where they were under the supervision of staff. Meanwhile, students inside the building were allowed, in the controlled movement piece, to use the bathrooms if needed, under supervision of staff, so we had teachers who weren't teaching that made themselves available to be in the hallways, to walk kids back and forth to the bathroom. Additionally, the STEM buses were returned back to Massey, so they dropped off the Jacque Hollow kids first and returned back to Massey. And we stayed in this hybrid situation between stay-put and controlled movement, because, as I mentioned in my email the other day, out of an abundance of caution, we were waiting for a K-9 unit to do a strategic secondary search of the premises, so we didn't want students and staff in the hallway when dogs arrived, so as soon as the K-9 unit completed its search, the school was deemed safe, and we returned to regular activities. But we were in, you know, that stay-put, stay-put controlled movement status for over two hours. I think it's really important to be clear that no weapons were found, and at no point was there any immediate danger to students or staff. One of the things, and the purpose for my emails, especially the essay, was emphasizing the importance of remaining calm during these kind of situations, and relying on accurate information to avoid rumors that may cause unnecessary alarm. I understand the importance of timely communication, but accurate, but I prioritize accurate information over fast information, I'd rather be accurate than fast. And there were quite a few rumors and misinformation being circulated. As in any emergency situation that we have, we conducted an after-action review with the team, which consists of myself, building administration, Sheila was there, the Monroe Police Department, our security personnel, secretaries, teachers. And, you know, the reason for, to do the after-action review is to say, hey, what went well, and identify areas where we can improve. So, you know, one issue that was obviously discussed was student access to cellphones. And, you know, while each situation is unique, we're looking to put procedures in place where students can access to phones when it's safe and appropriate to do so. Hindsight being 2020, we were in the hybrid stay-put controlled movement beyond the first period, and while we were waiting for the K-9 unit to arrive, no situation will be exactly the same, but I think if we were to replay this one, that might have been a good time at the end of the first period, when we were just waiting for the K-9 unit to arrive, to allow kids to access to phones to make a call. I know, you know, Mr. Swenson is working with staff and students, as you mentioned, to Areek just now, to talk about solutions in the future. Again, no two situations are ever gonna be the same, so it's difficult to make a hard and fast review on this, but we're open to discussion to make sure it's better. As we do every year, we'll continue to review our safety protocols with all staff to ensure there's common understanding amongst everyone in the building. I did receive a handful of emails where people wanted to know specific details about people that may have been involved, and, you know, I understand the anxiety of not knowing, but it must be understood that privacy laws prevent us from sharing specific details about those involved. With that being said, I do want to ensure everybody that we are fully committed to making sure that our school community is safe. I would be remiss if I didn't mention some of the highlights, some of the positives that came out of this. First, our staff did an amazing, an excellent job of keeping the kids calm during a somewhat stressful situation, they were in there for quite a while. The main office staff was taking a multitude, I will say, probably hundreds of phone calls, and, you know, remained very calm and professional through all that. Our students should be commended for the way they responded and handled themselves during this period. And finally, I'll just reiterate, I can't thank the administration and the Monroe Police Department for their collaboration and collegiality and professionalism during the entire ordeal, they handled it, they handled it very well. It was stressful, but they handled it very well. So, I just wanted to put that out there, it's kind of a recap of the three emails that I've sent out to the community.
Thank you, Joe, and the board appreciates your communication right away, too, because obviously, we're gonna have questions and all that, too, so we appreciate that. You got the information to me, I got it out to everybody, and then the emails were helpful to everybody, so thank you for that, and everybody else involved.
Thanks, thank you. It's a seamless transition to the August fund activity statement.
To funds.
Yeah, obviously, we're at the beginning of the fiscal year, there's not a lot of activity or drama at this point, so I don't know if anyone's got any questions regarding the fund activity statement. I can, okay. I mean, at this point, we're going through, making sure the, you know, we're, we did have a couple of payroll encumbrance issues with the fund activity statement, we're kind of working through those still. We'll, you know, there'll be some budget transfers in the near term, but other than that, nothing, nothing out of the norm, so, you know, putting in recs, putting in, you know, purchase orders, so, I mean, the encumbrances for the year, within the next four to six weeks, the fund activity statement will show what the balance of the year should look like.
Thanks, Ron, any questions for Ron at all?
How's the transportation for athletics?
It's, I mean, it's early, I haven't heard of any problems from the athletic department.
No?
I haven't heard of any yet.
Oh, that's good.
Steve says not yet, no.
Well, yeah, we haven't really had good progress, so far, L-Stars have been...
They've been doing good?
What about Jacque Hollow?
Unfortunately, the cross-country team has had to rely on parent transportation, they were not able to provide transportation. So, we have been a little concerned about actually accessing our facilities.
Is that going forward, like Jacque Hollow's still not gonna have transportation for any of their athletics?
We are freshly expecting it every season for every sport, and so, we were working hard to get set up for cross-country, because it is our only club sport that transports through athletics, through our athletics budget. You know, next time, we'll be asking this for basketball.
I'll follow up with L-Stars. Thanks, Joe.
Anything else on that, or for Joe? No? Okay, Joe and I are gonna slide over in a minute, we're gonna get our first presentation from Silver Petroselli and Associates on the facilities study. This report, number one, is on the condition of buildings, and I just want to let everybody know that I have asked for a very blunt and black and white report on these. If everything was in a perfect world, what would these buildings look like and the status of our buildings? We do have some older buildings, so this is report number one. The second meeting in October, we're gonna get the demographics report, we'll start formulating the master committee at that point, and then looking forward, you know, to the final report and moving forward then. So, during the presentation, Michelle, I'll let you introduce yourself and everybody, during the presentation, if board members have any questions, go ahead and ask, I know we have some board of finance members there, too, so if there's any questions, please chip in, and we'll move forward with that, okay? I do want to stay on focus, though, that this is the condition of the buildings report, I don't want to go down a rabbit hole of what are we doing with Chalk Hill, we're not gonna decide that tonight, so, alright. Michelle, all yours.
Great, thank you. So, my name's Michelle Noah, I'm architect with Silver Petroselli.
I'm Marquise Burwell, I'm an architectural engineer with Silver Petroselli.
Will Walter, I'm an engineer with Alfred Benish, and we are responsible for the analysis of the sites.
We hired Will's team for taking care of the civil portion of this project. So, just to kind of go over the process and timeline of our whole project here, we're really at the first step. Right now, we're just presenting on the assessment of the current conditions of your six buildings. Next month, we'll be getting into the enrollment projections, and then assess the current space usage, we're kind of already working on that a bit, utilization rates, and how the buildings will fit your projections. Then we'll be going into community engagement, and ultimately get into the master planning and options. So, facility conditions assessment, we do these a lot, we were really happy with all the drawings you guys provided for us, you've saved numerous drawings over, since 1960 on these buildings, so it was really helpful to be able to look at those. But ultimately, we walked the buildings with your director of facility and the head custodians, we're doing a visual assessment, each of us focusing on our specialty. Civils outside, obviously, they had their own separate trips, together, we came and did the building, I focused on architecture, Marquise focused on the plumbing and mechanical, and then we also had Bob with us, who focused on the electrical. We ultimately then come back and write a nice long report for you all, it's 250 pages, narratives, photos, to try to walk you through what we're seeing. But these spreadsheets are kind of what summarizes everything, we list, you know, the assessment, the violation, we try to reference a code section where applicable, and just give you a solution on how to remedy that. And then we also provide cost estimates with that. Please understand, these cost estimates are very conceptual, we don't have drawings, we haven't measured everything in detail, but we do use numbers from recent bids, we try to apply that, but a lot of times, we use cost per square foot, specifically with mechanicals or roofs and windows, those numbers come in handy, and they're pretty solid numbers. You'll see each of these spreadsheets are broken down by those categories, architecture, plumbing, mechanical, et cetera, and at the end, we do apply a lot of contingencies to these numbers, and also a soft cost, which would actually give you a full project cost, because we want you to understand the big picture. We also apply priority numbers, one through four. One is something we see as a code issue that should be addressed soon, and then four, all the way to four is a recommendation. So, you'll see all the colors kind of associated with that within these spreadsheets. So, we'll start with Fawn Hollow. So, this school was constructed in 1966, and it did receive renovations in 1989. It's 66,000 square feet, and it serves a K through five population. I'm gonna pass it off to Will to talk about the site.
Great, thanks, Michelle. So, what we were tasked with looking at on the site is several things, hardscape, meaning curbing, batuminous pavement, sidewalks, things of that nature, softscape, landscaping, fields, we're looking at athletics, where there are athletic fields, we're looking at playgrounds, where there's playgrounds, stormwater, at least what we can see above ground, and talking to the facilities folks about, are there flooding problems? Looking at utilities, we can't see the utilities, obviously, but we interviewed facilities' personnel, any known issues with water pressure, any known issues with sewer or septic, that type of thing. We're looking at site ADA issues, ADA compliance. And then also, what we did is, we analyzed the parking and the traffic. The parking, meaning we counted the number of spaces, we counted cars that were parked there, and the traffic during the drop-off in the morning and the pickup in the afternoon, looking at those movements, making observations. And generally speaking, with the traffic, and I'm giving kind of an overview of all the sites, so I don't have to go through this every time, but generally speaking, what we're looking for with pickup and drop-off, ideally, you'd like a complete separation of parents and buses, you really don't want any commingling of that, and then you also, when that drop-off happens, ideally, you want the kids, whether it's drop-off or pickup by a parent or a bus, you want that right at the curb side, you don't want them having to cross traffic. Obviously, a lot of these investigations we do are schools that are somewhat older, they weren't really designed with that in mind, and as we all know, there's many more parents dropping off their kids now than there were 40, 50, 60 years ago. So, with all that being said, I'm not gonna say that again, but that's kind of an overview of what we're looking for at each of these sites. So, at the Fawn Hollow site, and there's a lot of similarities, the pavement and the curbing, pretty much for most of the sites, what we found is, you know, they're in functional condition, there's not massive potholes, there's not unsafe conditions, but it's clear that the pavement and the curbing is beginning to reach its end of life. Typically, you can go 25 to 30 years if it's constructed well, but then you start to see alligatoring and ruts and things like that, so what we're seeing with the pavement and the curbing at Fawn Hollow is, it's functional, but it really does want to be replaced. The sidewalks, there's, you know, at Fawn Hollow, we're recommending selective renovation of the concrete sidewalks, for the most part, it's in decent condition, all batuminous sidewalks that are there, even if they're in good condition, we're recommending those be replaced with concrete, just because it has much longer, a much longer expected life. Out at Fawn Hollow, the landscape and the playfields, decent shape, recommending minor amendments. The playground equipment, the age varies, and we recommend replacement of the oldest equipment. Handicap accessibility, what we saw at Fawn Hollow, which is similar to the other sites, there's certain handicap parking spaces that are not in compliance, I mean, it takes quite a bit to be in compliance in terms of the sloping, in terms of the ramps, technical warning strips, signage, so various accessible spaces need to be upgraded. And then what we also saw is that the amenities on site, the playfields, the playgrounds, those, by code now, those have to have accessible routes to them from the front door, and that really wasn't the case in all the amenities here, or at many of the other schools as well. Stormwater, what we found is...
Are they meant to have accessible roofs?
Accessible roofs, yeah, from the front door to the playgrounds.
Oh, roots, I'm sorry. Sorry, I said roofs.
We don't want accessible roofs, for sure.
Thank you.
Stormwater, in this location, we were told by the facilities folks, it does flood, and it kind of busts the front area, as well as the playgrounds, does... and it kind of busts the front area, as well as the playgrounds, does tend to get a bit wet. So that would be something we would recommend taking a look at. And then as far as the traffic, you've got a, a bus drop in front and you've got your, your parent drop in the back. As with the case with a lot of these schools, you've got your staff working really hard to help with that, so it's functional. Student drop is a bit chaotic. You know, you've got the two schools in the back and Chalk Hill, obviously, is not in use. If that were to come in use, that might make it a bit more chaotic. But, but we would, you know, we would recommend trying to obviously have completely separate, especially with the, with the parents drop-off, it looks like there's probably not enough queuing back there. But as far as the, the parking spaces, there's, we counted 121 parking spaces. After the, the drop-off, after that cleared off, there was 92 cars that were parked. And then after the pickup in the afternoon, after that wave came through, there was 100 cars that were parked. Of course, during those pickup and drop-off, there's parents, you know, parking and then, you know, to get their kids, but, but it looks like you've got enough parking spaces for normal operations. Next slide. And then this is the matrix, and what we're prioritizing as one is the most, you know, the most urgent need and four is the kind of not the most urgent need. And what we've shown up here is typically we'll have the code issues be one. So there's no ones up here, although the handicap accessibility. Was that?
We put ADA as two.
Okay, so we put ADA as two. Three, we're going to be our hardscapes and things of that. And then four is, is the landscaping, which is, you know, could use a little touch-up, but is in generally good condition.
Now we're going to move on to the exterior of the architectural.
I definitely can't read that. So, so this is common with all elementary buildings. They need to be kept with, you know, there's some spalling, you can see in the other picture. That's brick kind of popping and breaking. The bottom of the brick on the other one just needs some repointing of the mortar joints, just common kind of upkeep we have with that. Your windows, we have two vintages of windows, 1966 and 1989. Both of those are nearing the end of their useful life, but more importantly, the 1966 windows are single-pane, inefficient. Those should be replaced, so we kind of broke those up into two categories for you there. And then the doors, they are also a bit insufficient with single glazing, and they also have wired glazing, which was used as a fire-rated glazing in the past, that's no longer used. It's not something you have to change now, but it's, it is a safety thing and people do not like using it anymore. It's not, it's not used now, so. Also, the roofs, we know that the roof was replaced in, I believe, 2017, but there is some significant alligatoring, so just mentioning to kind of get your roof vendor out there to take a look at it and upkeep with that. So on the inside, in the 1966 building, we're going to see a lot of ADA issues. So practically, all those twos you see there are ADA items. We do comment on some finishes. The gym floor does need to be repaired, so we have a number associated with that. Your ceiling tiles are starting to sag. You see that a lot with two-by-two tiles, I mean, two-by-four tiles. They tend to sag easier. So we have a number to replace that, recommendation, and then we get into all these twos. These are things you do need to address. No one says you have to do them tomorrow, but you need to start having a plan to update your buildings for ADA. So some of the items are door hardware. Most of the classroom doors are fixed, you can see in the image there. But some doors do have knobs. I'm switching to this slide because it kind of covers some of the ADA photos a little better. There's a push-pull issue with that handicap door right there. It doesn't have the clearances. The stair handrail is not a compliant profile. Restrooms, a long time ago, they were built much smaller than they are, they need to be today. We do quantify the number of restrooms that you should renovate per program, so every first grade set has, you know, an ADA accessible bathroom. You don't have to do every single room. So we're trying to kind of give you a, a number with that, but definitely nurses' restrooms. Casework is supposed to have some knee spaces built within them, so if someone in a wheelchair can pull up. Those aren't in any of the casework here, and then there's some older-style drinking fountains.
And on the fire protection and plumbing side, so we primarily saw a lot of missing insulation for the domestic water system. Some of the piping is a little bit older. Like Michelle said, with an older building, you'd probably anticipate that, but those are definitely reaching the end of their useful life, and you also are going to want to insulate that pipe. So the replacement for the insulation are primary recommendation with that. For the, for that natural gas piping there on the roof, some of those pipe holders are, are kind of like broken or missing, so that's, as per code, there, every 12 feet, I believe, you're going to want to reinforce those. So probably just replace them at this point on the roof. So that's pretty much it with plumbing and fire. On the mechanical side, there's one existing boiler. The age of the boiler couldn't be determined in the field. It's in good condition, but getting the age of that, you know, might want to see to replace it pretty soon with a condensing boiler and definitely installing a secondary boiler for redundancy. If that one were to ever go down, you'd want another boiler there to, to take the backup. For the hot water pumps, their, their condition isn't the best. They, they're most likely older. Those ages also couldn't be determined in the field, but they're looking like they're toward the end, if not past, their useful lifespan, so they should be replaced as well. As well for the controls for them, installing variable speed drives so that the, the pumps aren't going full, full out the entire time, that they'll be able to vary that speed and save some energy there. For the air handler side, the unit ventilator there looks a little bit aged, that third picture from the left. So a lot of them looked like they were past their useful lifespans. We know that air conditioning, putting that in schools is something that has been spoken about as of recent, so it, it might be best just to replace those entirely, just to get rid of them, demo them entirely, seal off that ventilation space. Look into installing a lot of central units that'll be able to handle air conditioning. So we did put in a, like Michelle said, a square footage value for that, for having central ventilation with the air conditioning side of it. There is one, so that, that one, that number one on the bottom, that red, that's sealing the abandoned exhaust. So we did see a few old exhaust fans that are, or ducts that are no longer in operation and we could, since there may be some leakage going on there, so we recommend just sealing those as soon as possible to not lose any heat. Then on the electrical side, pretty much straightforward. If any type of mechanical system that would be done, if it requires having to handle the ceiling space, we recommend replacing the lighting wherever that's done. And just slowly phasing in newer LED lighting in terms of the ballast, the actual light holder, rather than just the lamp itself. And then those number ones are a lot of exit signs, so the exit signs don't necessarily have ADA signage on them, so just replacing those with the, with the ADA signage would be code compliant. And the fire alarm, so yeah, installing fire alarm system, just making sure every area is covered within the school with the proper fire, connected to the fire alarm system, just for notification purposes of the electrical.
So we wanted to kind of break this down. This is the numbers I was talking about at the end. So all of our construction items totaled over 12,000, but then we want to put 15% general conditions. That's a common construction term that accounts for the contractor's scope of work. Then also a 10% owner contingency, a 10% estimating contingency, to get a construction total of 16.48 million. And then we put a 25% soft cost on. That's a cost to hire an architect or an engineer to get drawings done, testing, permitting fee, all sorts of fees kind of go into that, and 25% is our typical placeholder value. So that brings the total to 20.6 million. And you can see we have these little charts at the bottom to try to break that up, so you can see where the money is coming from and you can clearly see mechanical, you know, takes, takes a lot of money if you're going to upgrade your system there. And a lot of these are priority twos, and those are definitely tied to some of the accessibility items that we brought up. And I do just want to take a minute to say, I, we're not trying to scare you with these numbers. This is pretty common for a 1966 building. You're going to see a lot of the accessibility. These buildings are well-maintained, they're beautiful and well-taken care of, and we're not trying to poke holes at that by any means. Any questions?
Yeah, 20, 20 mils for all four phases, all four.
Yes, for everything.
And then if we did break this up, right, why do you have ADA's as number two? Shouldn't that be a high priority?
It is a high priority. We, we typically put ADA as two and actual, like code violations as one because those need to be done more immediately, whereas ADA, you can, you can plan over the next five years, 10 years, to address each of these items. Unless you have a lawsuit against you, then you gotta move on.
No, you gotta move on. And lucky for us, maybe not lucky, long-term, but you assessed everything in good weather. We haven't had icing and pooling of water, would you have taken that into consideration?
We were in spring doing this, so.
Right, and it's, it's been relatively nice. The second thought, and I think goes to the driveway, you have parents dropping off kids and then exiting the same place buses are coming in. Were you rerouting that? Was that even a consideration?
Well, we, I mean, our assessment is what is going on there today and would we recommend the changes we made? We didn't look at solutions. I mean, we could come up with solutions, but that really wasn't what we were tasked with.
It's just a solution, gotcha. And then this is again, getting along the solution standpoint. Two-by-four tiles are sagging no matter where you go, right? Is there any new product that's a two-by-four tile that could be, you know, we could start replacing? I mean, it's, it's typical of every place you go in this school. Two-by-twos are better, but two-by-fours are awful.
You can add more grids and go with two-by-twos, you know, too, so that's an option.
Okay, I'm done, sorry. Oh, one more question. Roof assessment, I'm not done. Roof assessment, you're looking at the roof and the alligator, crocodiling, whatever you want to call it. Do you anything, have you done anything to assess what that roof could support? I'm thinking a hedge or maybe solar panels or something along those lines, if we're redoing roofs. Just a thought.
No.
Again, a solution.
Yeah, we have not gotten into that detail yet.
Thanks.
Just as a reference point, so that could, when you use the $20 million cost, what, would you be able to estimate a new building that would, you know, so just as a reference point, as, you know, when we're told these are large numbers, so a new building cost to replace Fawn Hollow would be?
$900 a square foot or more.
Okay.
And just so you know, Fawn Hollow came out to $312 a square foot. Okay, so.
Michelle, and Joe, this report's going to go on our website?
Yes.
Okay, just so everybody knows, we'll get the report up on the website, so the public can see it and everything like that. Probably, probably a good point for questions at the end of every, when you're done with each school. And, hey, Dan?
Yeah?
I thought Fawn Hollow was baseboard electric heat?
Uh, some of it, it's not all.
Okay, so that's why the boiler's there for the rest of it and hot water?
It's for the gym.
The gym?
Yeah.
Okay.
It does the gym and it does the two wings that were added on.
That were added.
Okay, so how much of the school you think is baseboard electric?
60%.
Okay. All right, thank you. Steve?
I didn't hear the word asbestos anywhere. Did you all come across anything that might have asbestos or is that in the report?
So we do have a remark column on the spreadsheet where we'll note possible asbestos, but I don't know if I can't read it. One of the line items at the bottom is saying.
Very last one, yeah.
It doesn't, we don't incorporate the cost for that, so these costs can only go up from there.
Cool. So there may be asbestos, we don't know.
We don't know. We did review the AHRRA report that we were given, and that's where we noted certain things like that. And just in our experience, it's common things that tend to have it. We just noted that.
Yeah.
While we're on asbestos, did, did you guys do any type of testing for radon?
No, we, we, again, we're just doing a visual assessment. We do mention radon in a few cases, which will bring that point together. Okay, so moving on to Monroe Elementary School, it's your old school, originally 1935. Renovated numerous times, the 50s and the 60s, and then 82. You're just under 60,000 square feet, and this does, that number does include the board of that offices and the technology building in the back, and this serves the pre-195.
So on the site, one thing I should mention about pavement rehabilitation, if and when these projects become a reality, what we've made recommendations for in our report is that testing of the distinct aggregate material beneath the pavement should be taken to a lab or done for analysis. And it should be noted, is that sufficient for reuse? Is it not great, but maybe you can reuse it, you can place reclaim, or perhaps just a mill and overlay? So, so that, that type of testing should be done if and when these projects become a reality. But what we found at Monroe Elementary was similar to pretty much everywhere else. Pavement is functional, but not great, and it should be replaced. Sidewalks, half are concrete, half are tumulus. We recommend replacing the tumulus with concrete. Playground equipment, I actually think that's a typo. I think the playground equipment is in pretty good shape, but I think it needs some labeling. Handicap accessibility, same thing as before. Some of the handicap spaces need to be renovated. Access to the site amenities is not compliant. Out at this school, it does require a comprehensive site lighting infrastructure. For the, for the parking out here, there was 138 spaces that we counted. It appears that the parking is sufficient for normal times, not talking about pickup and drop-off. You've got the, the bus entrance out front and the, and the parents come in the south, and it got very hectic during the parent pickup and drop-off. We actually saw during the pickup, several cars were queued out on the roadway waiting to take a left turn in. There was people parking on the grass in the parking lot. It was very chaotic out there. So that, we would, we would like to see more queuing and more parking for the parents. So again, the parking is fine when you're not doing these pickup and drop-off, but during that, it does get very, very chaotic and dangerous out there, we saw. And the site, the same thing as, as before, handicap accessibility. And traffic management, we felt like was, was, was urgent enough that we put that in two category. Rehabilitation of the hardscapes is three, and then some of the landscaping and some of the playgrounds are four.
Okay, on the exterior, this is definitely the first stone school I've ever looked at. This is exciting, and it's actually in really good condition. There's some areas with mildew and everything building up, but repointing-wise, it, it didn't appear to need too much. But we are recommending some of it and then to clean and seal the whole building to really upkeep with that. But on the other side, the, the block walls, they need some, some fixing, some repainting. And same with the stucco on the second level, there's some areas that could use repairs, so we have a cost associated with that. The windows at this school are also single-pane, inefficient windows, so we have a number of costs associated with that and a separate one for the second floor for those windows. Some doors are inefficient, have wired glass or are not compliant, so we have a cost for replacing those. Additionally, there were just some rusty frames that could just be repaired. Roofs here are in need of replacement. They're approaching the end of their useful life. Additionally, the gutters are pretty, pretty poor here, a lot of broken components. Those should be replaced at the same time. And then with this school, we were just providing a number to insulate your walls better from the inside, since there's not really much insulation in these walls. If you wanted to get a better envelope, we could fur out the walls on the inside, so there's just a recommendation for that. On the inside, some materials are beginning to wear, such as the VCT flooring, some cracking and seams moving. VCT was noted in the kitchen, which just isn't typical, so maybe replacing that with a tile. Carpets wearing, same thing with ceilings, some replacement numbers for that. And then the bulk of it is, again, similar ADA issues. There's the stair up to the art room. It just needs another handrail on the other side. You do have an elevator here that's dated and needs some modernization, so you have a cost associated with that. There's no access to the stage, so we have a cost for a Lula-type of lift. And then some numbers to renovate your restrooms to increase accessibility. Both the single-user toilet rooms, the classroom toilets, and what we call the gang toilets, your bigger, multiple-people bathrooms. Same thing with casework, some knee spaces that are not compliant. Sinage isn't compliant here. Yeah, that's about that.
So for Monroe and the, and the fire protection and plumbing side, same thing with the, with this domestic water piping and the sprinkler piping, specifically on the domestic water side, just making sure it's insulated and the piping is within its useful lifespan. And just phasing that in, like replacing, replacing fittings and definitely the insulation on it. And just phasing that in, like replacing, replacing fittings and definitely the insulation on it. In the kitchen, just making sure grease interceptors are installed at the prep sinks. If they're not, you recommend installing those. Do you see that ceramic water fountain there in the third picture? So replacing those with stainless steel, definitely recommended. And then the second picture, the floor urinal, we recommend replacing that with a wall hung urinal. Floor urinals aren't completely compliant.
They're not code compliant.
So it's not, so it's not code compliant. Yeah, it's, and then the natural gas meter outside, this is more of a personal, just making sure there's no obstructions in front of it, like a shrubbery, just making sure it's clear in case the utility adds a company service there for any reason. On the mechanical side, so I would recommend converting steam system to hot water whenever that, whenever that would come into play with replacing the boilers, just seam piping tends to corro, be corrosive a lot faster, and hot water is generally more efficient anyway. And same thing with the insulation on, on the hot water system, just when that would be phased in, making sure that piping is properly insulated. The, for the boiler, we noticed the combustion damper right there in that picture on the bottom was failed open and not interlocked with the boiler. So that would be our, our priority number one of making sure that it's interlocked. When the boiler fires, the combustion damper will open and close, having to do with the boiler operation. So definitely want to address that as soon as possible. For the gymnasium unit, which is the picture up top, that unit is past its useful lifespan and, and as well as the insulation on it, so we recommend install, replacing the unit entirely. And just having that, we can incorporate air conditioning into the gym humidity controls if needed. So that would be a lot better to just phase out that, that unit and put in a new one. We also recommend the, for the control side of getting rid of any pneumatics in the school and putting in electric controls. Pneumatics just tend to be very temperamental and, and energy wasters. So it'd be better to have the electric controls and have a central BMS in the school. So we did have a, a square footage value for incorporating controls in a building management system that would be up to date, and that is primarily it on the mechanical side. And then for electrical, same thing as Von Hallow, just if there's any mechanical work being done in the ceilings, wherever that ceiling is touched, just replace the lighting, it's better than having, you know, putting the same light fixture back there, having up to date LED lighting with the new ballast is highly recommended. And then the same thing in terms of the exit signs, making sure they're, they have the ADA signage on them. And I believe for this one, yeah, and then just emergency lighting, making sure every area required has the proper emergency lighting. If there was a, a power down, that's definitely a, a number one item to be trusted.
Okay, so the overall cost here, total twenty-four million. See, this is spread amongst, you know, your architectural and your mechanical for the most part, taking most of that. And a lot of this again falls in priority two. And just for reference, this school comes at four hundred and four dollars a square foot.
Michelle?
Yes.
So can I ask you a few questions here?
Sure.
So I, with a few of my fellow members, had the opportunity to spend a half a day walking through all the buildings. So if you go to slide twenty-three, it would be electric going from me at slide twenty-three. And I know it mentions emergency lighting, so if, tell me if I'm wrong or not, though, I have to tell you, I taught our head of maintenance, so I'm sure I'm not wrong. I think all the elementary schools are lacking in emergency lighting. So why hasn't generators been mentioned for any of the elementary schools?
Actually, they have. It's a number four, we do recommend it.
So you do, that's a priority four, so right now, right now in our elementary schools, when we lose lights, we get ninety minutes of emergency lighting. Can't teach, can't do anything. And that's a priority four. See, as a retired teacher, as a retired woodshop teacher, so I can see me in my room without any lights, it kind of, I'm just, I guess I'm questioning politely your priority, and I realize that there's an algorithm, I got it.
Yeah, so typically like that and LED lighting, those would be something we always put as a four because you don't have to have it, but we, we recommend it, yes, it'd be beneficial to everyone.
And then if you go to slide sixteen, I just have a question about land. So you showed the zones. It was zone five, zone, right, right there. Superintendent Combs, so tell me what zone six is. I mean, I live right behind it, I've walked it forever, but I'm not going into woods.
Allen's back here.
Is that Allen's back here?
That's Allen's.
So do, so we don't own zone six?
No, I believe, I believe.
So are you putting zones up here we do own or we don't? That's what I'm trying to understand when it has the zones.
Isn't it just woods?
I believe the yellow is the property line.
It's just woods, because that's the field, right?
It's all woods.
So that's fields, so I, I was just wondering, and the reason why I'm asking is, living here my whole life, my phone's been ringing off the hook with this. And a lot of people are saying, hey Jerry, with parking, can't we take land, and I haven't walked it, so don't shoot the messenger, I'm sure it's wetland. Can't we use property we own to change the configuration of parents coming in? I know it won't, there's still only one way out, I got that, I, I do have that. But I'm just wondering, so Joe, have you walked it? I never have.
No, I've never walked it.
I'm just curious, I just don't know.
I've been back there a number of times, but a lot of tree work done in that area and whatnot.
Okay, I was just bringing up a hypothetical, I'm just trying to figure out life. Thank you, Michelle.
Play off, it's the, Jerry's question, actually. When it comes to parking and entrance, I know you said about the delay in coming up to pick up kids and, you know, from a left lane making a left turn, but there's also a significant backup on the right side. And that's a state road. Can we cut into our property line and make a, an other street to have people enter, enter that way, so you're not tying up traffic, which is happening daily? Exactly.
Yeah, typically what we're willing to do is have one, either, we'll have completely separated entrance and exits for bus and parent. And whether that's, each one has a two-way or perhaps a one-way in and out. But yeah, certainly, you know, I, I can't read that, I think it's zone two down at the bottom, the green space. Yeah, I mean, certainly, if we need more parking, we need more queue length, you know, when we look at solutions, we look at utilizing areas that aren't currently being utilized.
Well, is zone two a soccer field for the little kids?
Yeah, but you got, you got some, some space, because you have to town, anyway, but, that's one. The second's, it's your first stone building. I appreciate that thought since it's an old building. But only Steve, Jerry and I have been on steamboats and steam trains. We have a steam system in this building. What you're recommending is replacing that entirely, correct? Okay. Because if you watch, and nobody other than people on tour could see how people get in there to clean, to fix the broken pipes, it's insane.
Yeah, that, that's true.
It was a little entryway, but they climbed through.
Yeah, I didn't want to climb with it.
Oh, you saw it, Michelle?
I know what you're talking about, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And you saw, I think Al showed us the corrosiveness of the pipe, some of those fittings.
Well, we've had fails.
Came off in a recent burst.
Just waiting to start the system up and there'll be more.
Yep. Oh, wait, hold on. Catherine?
Hi.
Sorry.
Um, you gave a replacement cost new on Von Hallow. Did you have one for Monroe Elementary?
Well, it would be, so typically new construction is around nine hundred dollars a square foot in general.
So that's across the board?
That's across the board.
Okay.
But for this school, the cost per square foot for all these recommendations is, I think, four oh four.
Yeah, I got, I got that one. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Steve, you're good, everybody? Yep, okay, thank you.
Okay, so Stepney Elementary School, constructed in nineteen sixty-two, renovated in eighty-nine, fifty-nine thousand gross square feet, and it serves your K through five.
On the site side, consistent with the other schools, recommending rehabilitation of the, of the curbing in the pavement, sidewalks, half concrete, half tuminous, recommending replacement of the tuminous with concrete. Playfield, obviously that gets a lot of use. We would recommend irrigating that, just as a way to maintain it a little bit better. Handicap accessibility, various sedimentities do not have accessible path. Various stormwater upgrades that we're recommending. The site lighting, recommending replacing the fixtures with LED. And the traffic, well, for parking, we counted ninety-eight spaces. Not including the waves of drop-off, especially pickup, we, we counted about seventy-four of the spaces where the, had cars parked in them. During the pickup and drop-off, obviously it's very chaotic, very hectic, there's really no, no separation. There's intermingling of parents and buses, and we saw queuing back out onto the, into the right way. So clearly, we would, we would want to separate, have a complete separation on this site, like we would recommend on any site. And then similar to the others, the, you know, the playground, the ADA, we're recommending as a two. The replacement of the hardscape, three, and then we have, you know, we have, actually the playground is a four, so that was, that was, needs just a minor touch-up if you feel like.
Will, excuse me, can you go back two slides? In your report, can you include, or is it on the plans acreage? Because I'm looking at that zone five, I didn't realize we owned that as our property.
I did this all, yeah, all day.
Same thing as Monroe L, Jerry, what you were saying?
All day, I've been looking at the zone.
Is, do we have that, or could it be, could it just be noted there?
We have, we have that information, and I'm thinking these are all based on GIS, but we can put, we can double check that and put the acreage right on these, so you can see.
Can you assess viability at all, or no? Is it wetlands?
If it's wetlands versus buildable.
Some of the, some towns GIS have that, I don't know if your town has that.
Ours will tell you.
Does it have it on there?
Ours will tell you.
It does, see, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it typically won't have it by acreage, it'll be like shaded area. It'll show what's wetlands.
I'm just trying to think down the road when the master committee starts thinking about, you know, expanding or anything like that, it might be helpful.
Yeah, I think we can, we can,
That's a big chunk of land.
We can update these visuals with total acreage, and then perhaps try to shade the areas that are indicated as wetlands
Right.
on your GIS website.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
That would be very helpful.
Thank you.
All right, on the exterior, some of the similar, similar things, we have a little bit of different construction on the outside here, but some of the brick and block do need to be repaired, so the cost associated with that. Also, some mold and mildew, so just kind of cleaning those up and sealing them, so they can not grow as quickly. Windows are also single pane here, so we have a cost associated with that. And we do break out the nineteen eighty-nine windows, if you didn't want to do the full building, you can just do a partial. The doors are inefficient here, and they also do have the older hardware on them, so they are not ADA either. There's some rusty frames there. Here, I know the roof's newer from two thousand thirteen, but there is an issue with the bubbling roof, so we really want to bring that to attention. And again, you do have a warranty, so, I don't know, I think somebody should take care of that, maybe. And then also at the school, we did give the cost to insulate your walls from the inside, there's an allowance for that. On the inside, some VCT flooring wearing, carpet also, ceilings, very similar to some of the other schools. We have, the deck is damaged a bit on the inside, and that's probably due to, I researched that whole roof, too. I heard there was a rain, rainstorm in that cafeteria. It's probably from that, I'm guessing. Some door hardware is not accessible, some doors are also smaller than they're supposed to be at thirty-two inches, so enlarging doors. Handrails don't have the right profile or extensions. There's no access provided to stage, so you do need a lift. The typical restroom renovations that we brought up previously, same with knee spaces, drinking fountains and signage. So, typical cast of characters for nineteen fifty's, sixty's, seventy's, even eighty's, so. There's some photos of the smaller restrooms, you need a, you need five feet just around the toilet now. The drinking fountains aren't compliant, and you can see your signage there is also not compliant.
When you're assessing the bathrooms, are you making it, you know, if they do become handicap access, do we have enough square footage in the room to be able to do that?
So you're gonna take away, like for the classrooms, it'll hurt, you'll have to take away from the classroom space, yeah.
Confirming.
That's why nobody wants to do it, I, I know. You might lose a toilet in a gang restroom to enlarge it, so, you know, as we get into it, you'd have to do a toilet count and make sure we can get rid of, get rid of them, per quote.
When you're talking roofing repairs or replacement, is there any assessment in regards to weight load for a possibility of, you know, solar later?
No, we did not assess that. But typically, when we have projects like that, we usually do bring a structural engineer on board, and there's some type of reinforcing often.
Michelle, let's talk about that a minute. So we're, we're fortunate, we're unfortunate in how you look at it. We're already, it's exploding. You're gonna shrink a classroom, remember, you're talking to a retired teacher now. So start talking to me, since we're going through this twenty million, twenty-four million, forty-three million, which school you look, look at. What's gonna happen to the classroom as far as square footage? A tech ed teacher has a, a standard, not a state standard, one hundred and forty-four square foot per student. So many tabletops per student. So what is the firm doing to make sure that when Jerry Stevens walks into his new classroom after we do all this work, that I can handle the twenty-eight Atmasic, thirty, twenty-nine, twenty-eight, twenty-eight? Oh my God, I don't know. So I am just imploring the firm, the company, to look into, and I, we have to have ADA bathrooms, I'm not saying that, I'm just telling you another wrench at you. Don't shrink those rooms and put thirty kids in them. So yeah, another wrench.
No, I, I hear you, it's something that we go through on all projects. But there's, either I gotta take the corridor or I gotta take the classroom.
I understand. And then speaking of that, looking at the ceilings, and help me out, because I forget which school was. Was it Stepney that had the jutted ceilings, or was it Monroe because of the mechanicals?
Yeah, Monroe was very tight, is that what you mean? There was no room to go on.
So some of the, one of the, which one is it?
Stepney.
The lower ceiling.
So it's Stepney?
Yeah.
You know, here I am, tech ed teacher again, I removed that panel, I, I got seven inches. So I understand code, but what are you gonna do? You can't move the mechanicals, so how are you gonna make that compliant?
That, I don't know. I don't know their answer right now.
I got you, I do. I'm sorry, I'm firing these at you, it's just.
No, but it, it is an issue, it's, it's two inches under the minimum, so, yeah. I don't know if it's gonna intertwine with the new mechanicals, can we get flatter duck work? Can we, we have to explore scenarios.
That adds to your little star at the bottom, because if we have to push up, oh my gosh, it's, yeah, okay, thank you. Sorry.
Jerry, part of what they're doing in the next steps is programming
Correct.
and speaking to teachers and admins and all that, so they'll be looking at that, too. Yeah, it's a good point.
So, on the fire protection and plumbing side, booster pump there in the first picture is in fair condition. Just monitoring the age of that, looking at like a twenty-five year lifespan. So if it's anywhere approaching or near or surpassing that, then it should be replaced with a domestic water system. And you see the piping on it also isn't insulated, so just making sure the domestic water system, both cold water and hot water are insulated. We, we do have the provision for the node, at least for any asbestos insulation, but we just want to make sure those are insulated so that they're not dripping water, and especially on the domestic hot water side, so you're not losing heat as it goes through the system, and that would just be a waste of money at that point. The ceramic water fountains, like we said, are code compliant, so just replacing those with stainless steel. Fire protection equipment, just making sure it's with the, all of the, all of the fittings in the system are within their useful lifespan, aren't failing. If they are, we made a provision for replacing that if they start to fail. And then same thing with the kitchen, just making sure grease interceptors are installed in any prep sink, so that it can catch that grease.
Got a question for you, Bill. But water fountains, are they gonna be water bottle fillable ones or just water fountains?
That would be optional, but, but.
Typically what we're putting in these days makes sense. I like them.
Thank you.
I didn't hear you comment on the ventilation. I just recall going to Stepney and, and looking at the ventilation setup, and it looking like a carnival fun house. Being shocked at how, you know, what, I mean, because of the new implementation for ventilation that's coming up, was that looked at throughout all of our buildings?
Yes, the, the entire ventilation system, anything that would be available was looked at. We definitely looked at it here and commented on it, but we, we didn't make any planning for it in terms of what exactly would be installed, we just provided a mechanical per square footage for an elementary school, this is what you're typically gonna expect. And we, you know, we made sure we backed it in as much as we could there. But we, yeah, we looked at ventilation, we vetted out. So actually getting into the mechanical, a couple of the hot water pumps are in poor condition, you can see from the first photo there, just making sure they're replaced and operating within their useful lifespans. We, we did see variable speed drives for those, so, you know, just making sure those are maintained and for any new pump that would be put in. We did see variable speed drives for those, so, you know, just making sure those are maintained and for any new pump that would be put in, Jerry's connected. The large, yeah, those large air handling units in, in Stepney, so we, we saw a few things going on inside of them, in terms of the filter bank and the, the dampers, the piping, it's, it's all pretty outdated, so. We recommend an entirely new ventilation system incorporating air conditioning, if you want to utilize that space, that's fine, but just designing an entirely new system that's not outdated and making sure we're getting clean air into the, into the. So, uh, yeah, so that would be those, the, the unit ventilators, same thing, just replacing those and, or just completely getting rid of them, putting air conditioning into the classrooms is definitely a option. The gymnasium unit there, we, we saw that there is an exhaust fan that is interlocked, was supposed to be interlocked with that unit, the exhaust fan wasn't operating at the time, so it was a positive pressure gymnasium, kind of blowing the doors open, so. Just making sure that, we just want to make sure that the unit is within its useful lifespan, the exhaust fan is, and if not, then we would replace those as well, and, and want to implement cooling into the gymnasium, we've got humidity control. So, yes, we, so we have there our number four, it's just centrally tying in all of the, all of the controls and making sure any new equipment that would be put in could be remotely operated and monitored, it's definitely the best way to control the system. And electrical is the same story, any mechanical that gets touched, any ceiling that gets touched, just put in new lighting rather than installing the same old one. Making sure that we have the proper ADA emergency exits and, and making sure that the, the, the fire protection system, the fire alarm system is, is up to date, so we just made sure we made provisions for that.
So at Stepney, we have a twenty, just over twenty million dollars, similar to Fawn Hollow, a lot of that's in the mechanical, and the rest of it is kind of sprinkled around, but some of that's in that ADA in the inside.
Which happened square foot on that?
The square footage, I believe it was just under sixty thousand, yeah.
The, the cost?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry, I should clarify.
Um, it was, I think, three, three thirty-nine.
Again, you're placing glass with the wires in that, but even, even some non-doors, you have glass windows in the library.
Yes. So, yeah, we didn't call for the ones up high, just because it would be a lot, and people aren't gonna get hurt on those ones, we felt like, so anything within seven feet below, we called for.
So since we're doing the last elementary school, the first two had the replacement, what would it be for a square foot for in addition, is that also nine hundred square foot?
It's in the nine hundred, yeah, and typically, we're looking at like renovated as new, like if you were to gut the whole building, that's probably close to seven, around seven hundred.
Okay.
And as we get into those options, I'll firm up those numbers, because they have changed a lot over the last few years, it's hard to keep up with.
Okay, Lou.
Any, any questions at all? Okay.
Well, just one.
Go ahead, Jeff.
What, seeing as everything's on septic, to what degree did, was there any type of inspection asked of those systems and functionality?
No inspection, we just had discussions with facilities personnel.
Okay, so Jockey Hollow, built in nineteen ninety-eight, a hundred and six thousand square feet, and it serves your six through eight, part of your six through eight population.
So on the site side, same thing, pavement and curving, functional, but not great condition, we recommend certainly renovation or replacement, same thing with the sidewalks. Playground equipment, recommend replacement of mulch surfacing, various handicap spaces and access to amenities not compliant, recommending site letting, replacing the fixtures with LED. For the parking, we counted eighty-seven spaces, and we counted, again, not including the, the pickup and drop off times, that there was in the morning thirty-six cars and in the afternoon thirty-nine cars, so appears to be enough parking for normal operations. As far as the pickup and drop off and the traffic, obviously a bit chaotic up here, we noticed that the parents that arrived early, they circle around Chalk Hill, and, and things function out here, because you've got, you've got administrators and teachers, you know, like air traffic controllers out there directing things, but not a great situation. So the parents kind of queue up around Chalk Hill till the buses come through, once the buses come through, they release the parents that are already queued up around there, and then the parents and the buses are intermingling. You've got buses dropping off curbside, but the parents coming up, dropping off in the, you know, in the, in the lot, and then students are crossing the bus traffic with, again, with, you have people there making sure it's safe, so, but it's just clearly not a great situation, and we'd recommend, obviously, having two completely separate drop offs, one for the bus, one for the, one for the parents.
So, I'm, I'm gonna throw a curve at you then. When we built Jockey Hollow, Chalk Hill is our physical education classroom, always has been, we went to throw a footbridge over, and I was on the, I met with the, the nauseous forever, I was on the building committee, went to put, put a footbridge over, and we were told by the Army Corps of Engineers, know what? How the heck, me teaching there thirty-four years, Deb, are you gonna get another driveway?
Well, we're not gonna get another driveway all the way to the road, but once, once we get in the site, we'd have to look at doing separate, separate drop offs, I mean, we have to look, where can we expand, I mean, is there wetlands right on the left?
Fill in that, that whole field.
In between zone, in between zone five and zone two, is what he's talking about, that's the wetlands.
Yeah, I mean, they, we're not gonna be able, Army Corps is not gonna let us do that, and you, and your own well is commissioned, probably.
No, they're not gonna let us touch it, no.
Yeah, okay.
I, just a que, I don't recall, did, did you go over the, the entrance and the traffic flow for Stepney?
Yeah.
You did, okay.
And, and.
With one exception, the handicap parking is like a mile away from the front door, I don't know, you correct that.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, and, and the way that the, the way the regulation reads is your handicap parking really needs to be, wherever there's parking, that needs to be the closest part of that parking lot to the front door, yeah. Now, what we noticed out here with the, with the common drive that goes way back to the right of way, I mean, again, right now, this Jockey Hollow and Fawn Hollow, the times are, are staggered, so it, it appears to be okay. If you introduce Chalk Hill into that, and they have three schools, and, and that could really congest things on that, on that, the one main drive that's coming through there.
Trying to think how we did it when we first opened, Chalk Hill was open, Jockey Hollow was open, Fawn Hollow was open, and we saw, I mean, I was out there, I, thirty-four years, I, I was a guy standing there letting kids walk, I didn't, us do it, but we had.
Less, less parental, yeah, less parental driving, yeah.
He, I mean, I'm sorry, when you were there, I think Chalk Hill and Jockey Hollow were on the same schedule, okay?
Right.
The kids came in.
They were on the same schedule.
Six, seven, they came in on the same bus.
Yeah, but again, it's, it's, what we found is, it, this has been a pattern over the last fifteen, twenty years, that more parents are dropping off, and then COVID course.
Oh, yeah.
Is exploded.
That's all it was.
Yeah, yeah.
Sell fast passes.
I liked that, can sell fast passes, I liked that.
So nothing new here, same priorities as the, as, as the other ones.
Okay, so on the exterior here, we are, we do have a newer building, but there's just, again, some of that basing room maintenance that needs to take place, some swalling, some mortar repointing. A lot of the expansion joints have started to deteriorate, so those should be replaced, some rusty frames, scrape them and paint them. Caulk at the windows would be good to do, some of that is cracking, and typically caulk is only to last five years, so I'm sure it's been twenty years, or more. There is some wire glazing at some of these doors, so we called those out, and then replacing the roof, get that. On the inside, we noticed the VCT cracking in long lines, that to me signifies movement in the building where there should have been an expansion joint inside. I don't completely know if that's the case, but usually it doesn't crack like that, if, if that's, it's gotta be what's happening there, so we did put an allowance to kind of explore that and put some expansion joints in. Just noted, you know, the school's primarily sheet rock, so some areas do need repair, you know, this happens more often versus not having block walls inside. The joints too are just kind of evident and could be failing eventually, you can see them in that auditorium photo. We have some wire glazing on the inside, so we did call that at the windows around the office and in some of the doors. The elevator probably needs some maintenance, so we have a number associated with that. Some of the restrooms, there's the two teacher kind of restrooms near the, the gang toilets, those are not ADA compliant, so one of those should be made ADA. Same issue, we need to make more space for them, so it's kind of figuring out how we can do that. Some grab bars are not installed, so this is just some, you know, ADA last updated in two thousand and ten, so it's, this project kind of just missed some of those updates.
Michelle, I know my board members are gonna hate me, but as we were walking, Chalk Hill audit, sorry, the Jockey Hollow Auditorium has such a moisture problem, have you addressed this anywhere in your report, I mean, we were in there.
No, it's, no, but they'll, no.
Okay, I'm letting you know.
Yeah, thank you.
Right, am I saying that right?
Yeah.
I mean, the auditorium, humidity levels were up to ninety percent sometimes, and, and then, Michelle, one other thing, that first picture is my old lab, and I can tell you right now, I don't understand, and Anna she brought this up on the ceiling tiles, not strange. The larger tiles, no matter what building we walked in on, the floors always seem to crack. Do they do, I know they do a foot by foot, but is there a, a better, I think part of the reason why those tiles are so big, I mean, I taught in there forever, and expansion, shrinking, contracting.
Yeah, yeah.
Smaller tiles would do a better job of absorbing that, so I just.
Okay.
I don't okay him, assess it, just don't say, okay, he's a wood butcher, he does nothing about floors.
I promise that'll be my last comment, I'll shut up.
I saw it throughout the whole school like that, not just in the tech ed area, it's everywhere.
Christine and I are being very quiet.
Very, huh?
I'm sorry.
Behaving.
Um, some other iss, some other things, you know, they're more minor here, kitchen hand wash sinks don't have pipe wraps, knee spaces are a casework, so, let me show you the photos. So you can see that bank of bathroom sinks, none of them have the pipe wraps on them, there's some of the wired glass at the office, the handrail isn't the right extension, elevator, just update. Some of the science casework is delaminating, and then there's just some missing knee spaces at other casework.
Alright, so on the fire protection plumbing side, same thing as usual, replacing, making sure we see some missing insulation in the, in photo two, just making sure it's insulated and the insulation's up to date. Typical lifespan of insulation wrapped like that is like twenty-four years, so just making sure it's all up to date and properly insulated. For the fire protection side, you just want to maintain it, make sure it's, anything that's failing is replaced and, and then all areas are covered, so we did notice that the stage in the auditorium didn't have any sprinklers, and it's not necessarily required, but we just would recommend it for anything there that could be flammable. So just getting sprinkler covered, the coverage on that stage area would definitely be good. That top picture there above the, the gas meter all the way on the right, that's the lower roof, I believe that's where the auditorium unit is, the, the, um, the air conditioning unit, so. And we didn't see any overflow protection for, for the roof drains, we just saw the primary roof drains and nothing for overflow, so. If there isn't any overflow provision, we recommend having that installed, and just so there's no pooling on the, on the roof, and that is just about it, I mean, yeah. Oh, and, oh, and one of the water fountains we saw had some storage on it or covering it, the code value is one water fountain accessible per one hundred students, or one hundred building occupants rather, so just get the storage off of that water fountain wherever it is, so that it can be used if it's useful. On the mechanical side, wasn't awful, the, the boilers are, are in fair condition, so just once they pass their useful lifespans, we just recommend installing condensing boilers, those are higher efficiency, natural gas is already there, so just having the higher efficiency is, is always more recommended. The second photo there, the, is the filter bank for the auditorium air handler, I believe, we're just sort of make sure they're on a proper changing schedule and that there's, you know, good ventilation air coming in. And the unit ventilators, we don't recommend keeping, we always just recommend putting in a ventilation system, so we did make provision for that. Putting in brand new ventilation, having the, the air conditioning option, even to handle the humidity that's going to be on the air conditioning side in, in the auditorium, so. If it means upgrading that unit to be able to handle the higher latent load than, than anticipated, then that, that would be okay, and we did factor in just a large square footage value for upgrading your ventilation and air conditioning.
And all of those handle humidity, all of those new ones will handle humidity as well.
Yeah, but especially if they're slightly oversized in terms of like being prepared for the, for the moisture in the air, so as long as they're sized properly for that, they'll be able to handle and do the dehumidification. And there is a BMS in the school, and it's, I looked through it, it's, it's good, we just make sure that it's calibrated and that the values it's reading are accurate, some of them seem kind of off, but besides that, it is a good, a pretty good system. And on the electrical side, same story, as soon as you touch a ceiling, just replace the lighting, make sure the, the exit signs have that ADA, the, the ADA lighting, the ADA signage, and I believe that.
The fire alarm system.
Yeah, so the fire alarm system, just, it seems to be approaching its, its useful lifespan, so, you know, want to start planning to, to replace that once it does, so they can have enough to exist.
So, Jockey Hollow, we have twenty-three point two million, a lot of that is in the priority two and in the mechanical numbers. For frame of reference, the cost per square foot here is two hundred and eighteen. Any questions?
Questions at all?
Okay, no, okay, thank you.
So, Masic High School, constructed in nineteen fifty-eight, renovated in seventy-seven and two thousand and four, two hundred and sixty thousand square feet, and serves your nine through twelve and your six through eight STEM program.
On the site side, same deal with the pavement and curving, recommend replacement. Sidewalks, minor renovations to the existing concrete walks, but we do recommend a new sidewalk out to connect the school to the athletic fields, and speak of the athletic field, so, the one in the southwest, that's my understanding, that's not, that's used by the town, I think, but that's, it's not in great shape. The baseball field, you know, just minor, minor upgrades, just your synthetic turf field, look to be in good shape, it may need additional infill material, I mean, the infill typically lasts ten to twelve years, and you like to spruce stuff every, you know, five or six years.
Done Friday.
It was already done?
It was done Friday.
Okay, we'll strike that then, but I guess we were right about that, right?
Thanks to the storm.
The storm.
The, the track, the, the synthetic part of the track, typically the way those are built, there's a batuminous base underneath it, and again, every eight, ten, twelve years, you should replace that, the first replacement, you can just replace that, the top portion, I believe that's already been replaced once, so the next replacement should also include a renovation of the batuminous part underneath it as well as the, as well as the top part, so. That's something to just be aware of, handicap accessibility, same thing as the other sites. As far as parking, looks like you have an abundance of parking out here, we counted five hundred and ten spaces and, and then during the non-drop, in the morning during the non-drop off, we, we counted three hundred and sixty-seven cars, so it looks like you got ample, ample parking, in the afternoon, we counted three hundred and nine parked cars out of five hundred and ten, so, looks like you got more parking than you need.
Should have been here at the football game, Bill.
Yeah.
They were up and down the driveway parked.
On the grass, impossible.
Yeah, well, that's, you know, that, that's, it's good you have that, and that's, you know, you don't design schools for, it's like you don't design a church parking lot for Easter and Christmas, right, so, it kind of comes with the territory, but as far as the, as far as the traffic, you do have separate, separated bus and, and parent, the buses, of course, come up on the northern one, they circle around. The problem that we saw with the, with the parent drop is you've also got, of course, as a high school, you had student drivers who were coming and parking, so there's long queues, because I think what's happening is the, the, the kids, the student drivers are, are backed up with the parents who are dropping off their kids, and they gotta circle in the south all the way around to come back to get to this, their, their own parking lot, so. They're kind of sitting in line with the parents, so perhaps if there was a way on that southern drive to make a quick connection right there, so they could get to their parking lot instead of having to go all the way around. so they could get to their parking lot instead of having to go all the way around, that might be a solution to help alleviate some of that backup. And we did notice a queue of quite a ways, it didn't go all the way back out to the roads, but it did come quite a ways back on that, on that drive, and I think what's happening also is because the students are probably frustrated, they don't want to sit in line for fifteen minutes to get to their parking lot, some of them are trying to come in where the buses come in and sneak over to their parking lot, and that's, you know, doesn't make for, for a great situation either. So I think that there's a little bit of analysis that needs to happen here to, to make that a bit more efficient out there. And then with our, you know, with our, with our priorities, it's, it's the same as, the same as we're recommending, the ADA spaces, the, you know, the pathways to the fields, we're putting that as a two. The hardscape, we've got a three. It's not great, but we've got it as a three. And then there's a four, but I can't, I can't read that.
Check wall.
Cheek wall.
Cheek wall.
Maybe as we move the stairs, we're gonna, cheek walls get, get patched.
Okay, so on the exterior, we have, we have some masonry, more masonry issues. There's a lot of repointing here. Some spalling brick, mildew growing, joints kind of disappearing, so there's a lot of repair we'd like to see on the exterior. We also are calling the window caulk, I noticed the cracking here too. And then half of the roof will need replacement soon. If you see those pictures, the modified bituminous granulars are all coming off, leaving the asphalt, the, to be UV degradation, so. That, I believe, is all your two thousand and four roofs, because you've replaced the others in two thousand and fourteen, I believe, so. Half the roof there we're calling for. Um, not a lot of issues on the inside, again, two thousand and four, you picked up most ADA issues. We have some wired glass, and then just grab bars at the toilets have changed. That was the main change in two thousand and ten, so you're pretty good here.
On the fire protection plumbing side, just want to, again, make sure the domestic water system is properly insulated. We saw some missing or older insulation, so just making sure that's up to date on the domestic water side. Then, we, we were informed that possibly having a dedicated boiler for the pool that's closer to the pool than you think going across the school. It definitely makes sense, so we, we put in a provision for that. That definitely, when it, when the time comes, would require making sure the proper clearances are there, the proper floor drainage for having a boiler there, but we did make provision for having a dedicated boiler. That does make sense. On top of that, it, it seems that the domestic water comes in right there as well, so having your domestic water system over where the boiler is doesn't really make as much sense if they're already gonna put a boiler in near the pool, so. We, we also made a provision of adding a dedicated domestic hot water heater that's natural gas fired right there where the new boiler would be, so that you're not losing all that heat pumping around across the school. It's right there where the water comes in, you heat it up and pump it. So we, yeah, so we added provisions for that. Just making sure the roof drains are clear. We did see a little bit of pooling, and we just want to make sure the roof drains are clear. There's, and there's secondary overflow provision, so that we don't get that kind of pooling on the roof. And that's, yeah, that's, that's just about it on the plumbing side. The fire protection system is good, it's, it's up to date, so if anything fails, just replace it. And for the mechan- on the mechanical side, so we were informed that almost if not all of the air handlers rooftop units are, are approaching the end of their lifespans. It seems that the two thousand and four renovations were when all of those were installed, and so we, if we can't recommend something twenty years out, probably best to replace it, especially typical lifespan for those would be between twenty-five and thirty years anyway. So, it, so we, we definitely made a pretty large provision of replacing the ventilation system, or at least one to one, replacing those units. So it wouldn't be reducting anything, just take the unit out, put in the, the new unit. It would be a more efficient unit, most likely, could be resized for up to date ventilation requirements, and, and then having air conditioning installed in places where it isn't right now. We also saw some electric, some exhaust fans were set to in-hand, so I guess just being operated maybe via switch or, or something, so. We just recommend putting those in automatic, just so you're not wasting energy having them run whenever they're on, and they don't need to be. So, just making sure that all the exhaust fans are automatic when, when they can be. And for all the new air handlers, we recommend variable speed for the fans, just we want to save energy as much as possible, so. That, we did make provisions for, for upgrading the, the controls on that end. Check, making sure the entire hot water heating system is insulated, that's always a big one, it's saving energy. And then the, the BMS looks very good, so we just, we, we put it in any way of just making sure it's calibrated and it's reading properly, so that it's not opening valves or turning things on when they don't need to. So that's pretty much it. And on the electrical side, the same thing, just making sure everything is, is LED. I think this is fairly good with that, so it'd be more on the emergency side, so we, so just, yeah, want to make sure that emergency lights are installed where needed, and I believe that's the ADA signs, yeah, so ADA exit signs are definitely required, so just look into that as soon as possible.
So with that, surely because of this large size of this building, the total's at forty-three point five million, and you can see a lot of that is in the mechanical number. Any questions here?
Just the square foot for-
Oh, yep. I'm sorry, it's a hundred and sixty-seven. Okay, so Chalk Hill, constructed in nineteen sixty-eight, it did receive some renovations around two thousand and twelve. Ninety-one thousand square feet, and it's been inactive for your district since around two thousand and ten, and not used since two thousand and sixteen. The first ti- so the site, well captured in, in the Jockey Hollow one, so those, that cost is in there. So I'm kind of moving right on to the architectural. Here, we have some concrete walls with mildew and faded finish, so it's just really painting and ceiling. Limited brickwork that needs repointing. At the roof line, there's some insulated panels that need some repair and maintenance. These windows are original, nineteen sixty-eight, single pane aluminum windows. Those should be replaced. And a lot of the doors are nearing the end of their useful life, so we have those, and then the roof will need a replacement. On the inside, keep in mind, we were, we're viewing this building with flashlights and a little bit of daylight, it was pretty tough, since there's no lighting in there. So the VCT flooring definitely will need to be replaced throughout. Most of the classrooms kind of look like, I mean, I'm probably capturing the worst in these pictures, but they pretty much look like that. They need to be repaired. Where, have a pretty big number for painting, kind of trying to bring this building kind of back up. Gym wall pads, there was just a little, the gym looks almost pristine, like minus drips from the skylights on the floor, which would be taken care of with the roof, but it just needs some wall pads kind of filled in, so we have a number for that. Ceilings are definitely in need of repair throughout. You have old sined ceilings in some areas. So we kind of called for a number of all of that. Doors and hardware will need a replacement, a lot of, some doors don't even have hardware or, are just older and need replacement. The elevator is likely past its useful life, so we have a number for that. There's no ramps in some of your tiered rooms, there's a lecture hall and a music room, so some type of ramp or lift should be incorporated there. Restrooms, every single one of them did not meet ADA, so we have some restroom numbers with that. And then at the end, we have recommendations. Obviously, if you bring this building up to a school again, you do need to fit out your kitchen servery, you need furniture technology, and then we also provided a number to insulate those walls. So there's some photos, sorry, I keep talking and miss the photos. So a lot of, some casework was new, probably in two thousand and twelve, but then some looks like that, either half kind of taken apart or older, so those should be upgraded. Drinking fountains, there's some of the hardware that's there. That last picture, they blocked in doorways, so that would need to be explored to make sure egress is working. I know that was in the basement area, so.
So for fire protection and plumbing, the fire protection system, we just recommend having it redesigned, making sure everywhere is covered and that it's up to date, just to make sure that, that the proper protection is there. For the, for the domestic water system, I just want to, it seems that there's a decent amount of asbestos in the school, so. You know, we, we want to make sure that we have it insulated and a bait bat when necessary, to be able to make sure that's entirely insulated and covered. The water fountains, we saw a decent amount, if not all, ceramic water fountains, so those are not code compliant, just want to change those to stainless steel. So that's pretty much, and then on the domestic water system side, so this would actually fall under this, we, we didn't see any natural gas provisions made for the school. It seems that it was on fuel oil before. So if, if that is true, we recommend, and we have a provision for installing natural gas and working with the utility on that to, to have gas-fired equipment rather than staying on the fuel. On the mechanical side, I recommend replacing the boilers. Definitely the, the condensing gas fire boilers, they're higher efficiency. These boilers seem to be approaching, if not past, their useful lifespan, so. The up-to-date condensing boilers just save energy, but that would also require the natural gas provision to be made, so we just want to make sure that that is there. The combustion air, so with the new boilers, you need to have combustion air provision and make sure it's interlocked with the boilers in there, so we did make a provision for that. Same thing, the, the pumps, we, we would need hot water pumps installed, so everything with the hot water system, we tried to factor into that, replacing boiler and hot water system number. Just having new pumps, new fittings, new piping, we tried to capture all of that in there. The air handling units, we, we couldn't get to the roof, but it's pretty safe to say that they need to be replaced, and should have the works, the variable speed, making sure the air conditioning is installed if needed, if desired. And then we did see that there's pneumatic controls in the school, so we want to get that out, the electric controls in. The central monitoring system, that would be able to monitor and control everything. That'd be the most efficient and effective system. And, yeah, and then with that, the new air handling, just making sure that the ventilation requirements are up to date, and, and if cooling, like I said, if cooling is desired, we could, we factor in just putting air conditioning in with the, with the new ventilation system.
Could or did? You did factor it in?
We did factor in, into the mechanical number. Electrical, we just recommend an entire new electrical service for the school. It would make sense with all the new HVAC equipment, all the new lighting, to just have, make sure you're covered and able to provide enough electricity to everything, so just a resized new control system. And for, and same thing with the, with the lighting, just want all the lighting, LED preferable in the end.
Okay, and with that, we end at forty-three point six million to kind of get Chalk Hill back up and running. That comes out to four hundred and eighty-seven dollars a square foot. As I mentioned before, renovate is new, we're seeing closer to seven hundred, so it makes me feel like, what are we missing here? Because it's probably gonna be, if we really renovated this building all the way down to the structure, it could be a little more than what we're saying here.
Did you take into consideration, when we took over Sandy Hook and moved them to the school, we downsized everything to elementary school size? I retrofitted the bathrooms, retrofitted the sinks, retrofitted. Is that bringing it back just the way it is currently? Was that modifying it to be more usable?
There was not ADA compliant, so I'm calling to renovate all those bathrooms. Like I said, the, the best thing that they left with was the casework, I would say. I see they put like rail, they redid the railings on the stairs.
Right, over the railings.
Yeah, I saw that, so there's a low hut, but you can, you can leave that, I mean, we don't know what age group yet, right?
And did you look at the sore bathroom in the basement? The, where, where EMS used to be was a shower room that looked like-
Yes, yes, yes.
Came out of a murder mystery.
Yeah.
Boys and girls locker rooms. Those were the boys and girls locker rooms.
Jerry, did you film sore there?
So, yeah, our list accounts for everything we said there. We didn't do a full gut of those rooms downstairs like that, so there, yeah, there could be. I think as we get into this project and talk about bringing this back online, there will be additional costs.
Yeah, of course, because what you have here is, is forty-three, and if I do it ninety-two-
Yeah.
Times the seven hundred, which is low.
Exactly.
That's only sixty-four to do as new, so, yeah, I got you.
And then, keep in mind, well, I'll go to the next, if we're done, I'll go to the next slide. So this kind of summarizes all of that, and you can see the cost, cost per square foot there. This doesn't take into account any state reimbursement, so as we kind of get into the next steps of things, we could factor that in. And I looked up the twenty twenty-five reimbursement rate, assuming that's when, at the earliest, we would start applying, you have a thirty-seven point eight-six reimbursement rate, so.
That's for new or for?
So that's, so that is not for new, they'll, they'll take that down to twenty-seven if you built new. That would be renovating any of the buildings, that would be if you're just gonna do projects such as window, roof replacements, code updates, you can do a lot of the ADA through that. Yeah, so kind of any of those type of projects.
This is state reimbursement you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, just state.
Just state, the school construction grants.
State?
So, in the state reimbursement for miscellane, for, not like new, but if we wanted to pick off just priority ones and twos, you've got a reimbursement rate, but does that cover everything?
No, so.
Right, so that's of eligible-
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, so do you have a value for what would be eligible within these numbers? And if you don't have it today, can we get that?
Yes, I think we'll be working definitely into that direction. We don't have it right now, but yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That, that's something I think everybody has to remember.
Yeah.
Eligible items, so there may be an item two on here that the state doesn't reimburse.
Um, and the ra- the rates also vary with, I'm sorry, with enrollment numbers, so it's like, that's kind of what, we need to get that piece into it, and then we can really get into that.
Is a question Dave, right, I guess for you, or even for Joe. Are you all going to take all of the things that they've come up with and compare it to twenty fifteen's results? Because a lot of these things at a high level are not new, like, single pane windows, we've known about forever. And so the question is, are we now going to bite the bullet and do some of these things, right? As, as opposed to hearing about these for the, you know, the detail when we read the report? May not be things that we're hearing about for the first time.
Yeah, and, and some of the projects that they're talking about, we already have in our five-year capital plan that Dan's, they put in, so roofs and stuff like that, right? Right, so. Be for the committee, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then for your committee. For our committee and then for your committee.
Yeah, yeah.
We got a table, but.
Want to go back?
Any other questions?
No.
Michelle, any, anything else?
No, I think that's, you know, again, this is the first step, so it's kind of, where are we? And now we can start pulling all the other pieces together to really kind of figure out what, what the next step should be.
Well, thank you very much for coming, very in-depth report, appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
We'll get this up on our website so that the public can see it, and looking forward to seeing you second meeting in October. Yeah, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Just fix, this is just a fix.
Bob, can you put the budget on the jet connect names?
You all right, Joe? We're good? Okay, we don't have much left, so we're gonna move on to unfinished business, which there is none of. Okay, we don't have much left, so we're going to move on to unfinished business, which there is none of. So we're going to move on to new business. Joe, I understand item number A, that request has been withdrawn, so we can skip that?
Correct, yeah, we can skip that. That was, I spoke to Steve earlier. We thought Masick would need an early dismissal for the PSAT day, but remember that the PSATs are now computer adaptive, they don't take quite as long. So what they're going to do is offer the seniors three hours, kind of a three-hour late arrival because the teachers will be engaged in PSAT program for grades nine, 10, and 11. The seniors can either work on their capstone projects independently or college applications independently. And for those who can't get here three hours later, they can, they have transportation through the regular buses. So they are withdrawing the request for the early dismissal.
Okay, thank you, then. We're going to move on to number B, policies first review. Christine, why don't you just take us quickly through each one, transportation and all that?
So the first one was just adding a missing chart. There was no change to the policy, it was just a chart that was missing, so we were adding it in. So that was an easy one.
I was going to ask you that because in the, in the, in the link, there was no red line, so, okay, thank you.
Yeah, so that's why the policy didn't change, this is just literally adding in a chart. Okay, number two is the ages of attendance and misemployment policy. This has to do with updating the two policies around the kindergarten age and, am I missing anything Sheila? It's mostly about the kindergarten age, right?
Yep.
Yep, so it's just a policy around that.
Putting the two into one and then getting rid of the separate policies, yeah.
So just making it, yeah, cleaning it up. Then the next policy was tenants' intruency. We just updated the regulations to reflect the block scheduling and number of classes missed for lost credit. So if you remember, we talked about this because of the block scheduling and the time for the students. We adjusted it down so that it's more in line for block scheduling, so.
Yep.
Okay. The electronic device policy, this is about the phones. And just to clarify, in the policy, it does have an emergency contingency for the principal to do what they see fit.
His discretion, yeah.
See how she's blamed you, Steve?
Sorry, Steve. But it's in there for multi, not like emergency health, there's different, you know, so it's more flexibility. This is really just the policy to say that the phones will be collected at the beginning of class, put in a locker, like that. But there are, there's flexibility within the policy. So the policy itself won't have to get changed for whatever, going forward, you guys decide to do.
Yeah, that's good, that's good.
Would you comment on that? In the policy, it says staff should submit, a staff should submit phones to school administration to be locked up. Parents, guardians, or adult, non-student specified, parents may retrieve the cell phone from administrative office staff during regular office hours. If the phone is not retrieved within five days, the phone can be returned to the student. Shouldn't there be a communication to the parent that that's happening, or?
No, there would be a communication to the parent.
There, there is, when I mentioned to Christine.
But the parents, I've had some of these, a parent, very few these days, but where a parent's like, oh, he should have had his phone out. That phone could sit there for five days and you can get it back, you can get it back then, instead of the parent coming in to pick it up.
Right.
So it punishes the kid, it uses us, but it?
Punishes the kid, so the parent can come get the phone.
With the reward of getting the phone back after five days.
But the parent's saying, yeah, leave it.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so, yeah, that's that. And then the last policy was a new required policy on English learners and our process for handling students. So it's just directed from K, and that's it.
K policy, right?
Yep.
Any, this is a first review, so it'll come up at the next, next meeting. Any, any questions?
Are we, are you looking to change the high school schedule and then we'll be looking at that policy again? Are you sticking with the block? I feel like somebody brought that up once before. Did I make that up?
Yeah, I actually adjusted it based on what most likely the days of contact will increase to. So rather than just cut everything in half really for the block, I adjusted it for what most likely the days of contact will be. So no, we won't have to come back next year to do this again.
Perfect.
Okay, anything else on policy? Okay, moving forward, our next meeting is going to be October 7th and the October 21st meeting will be the demographics report. Mr. Stevens, what say ye?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Stevens. Do I have a second? Christine, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, unanimous. Good night, everybody, and thank you.